Okay, welcome everybody to the Perry Carnegie Library Board Meeting. Danette is not here, so I'll be running the meeting for her. So it's a call meeting to order and have roll call.
Copy.
Here.
Plutso.
Here.
Marshall. Davis.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher. Worthy.
Here. And we have quorum, so we're gonna have our invocation by Nate Green.
All right, let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be here tonight. Gathered together as a community, we are thankful for the many blessings that we have, the health and the strength of this community. We're grateful for the many blessings we enjoy as residents of this wonderful country. We pray that you will continue to bless it and help the leaders of the country to make wise and inspired decisions. Bless us with safety, both in this community and in the country generally. We're so thankful for the many residents who came tonight to make their voices heard. We're thankful for democracy and the chance that we each have to share our opinions without fear. We are thankful for all of these things and we're especially thankful for your son, Jesus, and we offer this prayer in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Nate.
Thank you Nate.
All right, let's start with item number one, the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. And coffee.
Yeah.
Plutso.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the library board meeting. Okay. Item number five, we have a presentation by Ms. Hannah Wade.
They haven't set up, so I don't even need a mouse. But I want you to know, I made this PowerPoint. With mouse. So we just found out, actually in the last couple of days, that we received grant funding for new computers, which was good because of the Microsoft thing in Iowa. So we received fifty-six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. This activity is where the Institute of Refusing Library Services and the Oklahoma Department of Libraries, the opinions and content of these do not necessarily reflect the positive policy of the Oklahoma Live Department of Libraries or I, the OS. And no official endorsement should be inferred. That was what was on their paperwork, saying, "I had to say every time I talked about this." I did not read that. So we have a new adult section. The characters in the stories are eighteen to thirty years old. They're popular authors like Rebecca Yaros, Colleen Hoover, Sarah Moss, Megan Quinn, Abby Jimenez, and Miranda Sanderson. So people in this age group that can just walk in and go to their spot and find their reading materials. We copied from another library. Fun fact, these are the mobile shelving units purchased with state aid funding that that new adult section materials are on. They were delivered to Stillwater Mill and put together by the street department.
I was gonna say, I recognize one or two of these.
So we have an ongoing book sale. In August, we're gonna, six books for a dollar, audiobooks for a dollar, movies, two for a dollar. We have free books in the entry, cash or check only, and there's some kids' books downstairs. We anticipate signing a contract with Hoopla very soon. Keep your fingers crossed. The library card used for Hoopla needs to have less than five dollars in fines and be current, and you need to download the Hoopla app. So the benefits of Hoopla is their immediate checkout, there's no waiting list. So we'll do probably a limited four, maybe five checkouts per month per card, because we pay for these individual checkouts. E-books and audiobooks, manga, comics, and anime, you can come, you can download the stuff when you're by Wi-Fi, so come park outside the library if you don't have Wi-Fi, or come in. And they provide extra books at the end of the month. So a lot of times on Overdrive, there'll be a long waiting list, because it's consortium, the book will be sitting on our shelves in paper. So I would encourage you, if you don't want that long waiting list, to look at that. So use Overdrive first, or our shelves, then Hoopla. You have limited checkouts with Hoopla, but no waiting lists. Hoopla will not have a waiting list, but very limited checkouts. Be smart for maximum checkouts. So we received a one-thousand-dollar local donation to help pay for kids' programs and materials. Now getting fun. The last day to return reading logs is Monday, May twenty-first, and we'll have the statistics soon for the circulation, reading logs, and reading logs returned. So now we can go fun. You may know some of these people. The Y Kids. Laser Tackett Summer Fest. So do you guys have any questions about what we're doing? We do all these activities to get the kids in, check out books.
I know my wife loves going to the activities with the kids, and we appreciate you guys putting those on, and you do such a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Pam. So item number six, don't go too far. I amend the Perry Carnegie Library Board Policies on Selections and Collections.
A lot of this was taking up extra words, but I don't feel like, and does the policy really change, more making it more concise? So...
Are you having questions on the changes that were made in that, or proposed in that?
And book jobbers are middlemen. The publishers are book jobber, and then we buy from the book jobber.
Everybody has any new business? I'll make a motion that we approve to amend the proposed changes to the Library Board Policies on Selections and Collections. Just okay.
Okay. Coffee.
Yes.
Plutso.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item seven, any new business? Amen. adjourned. There you go.
All right.
All right, let's call our meeting to order for the regular meeting for our city councils at the city of Perry. Have roll call.
Copy.
Here.
Plutso.
Here.
Marshall. Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Boucher. Worthy.
Here. We've got quorum. Item one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And coffee.
Yes.
Plutso.
Yes.
Yes. Cold Iron?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda, or citizens presenting their concerns or comments. All right, let's continue on to item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. We'll start off with our actual reports, and today we'll start with word four. Sammy.
The only thing I had was, the street department did a very good job on Seventh Street. It looked very nice. And they even put barricades on the sides.
Oh, pass it on through. Sam. Did that take everybody's thunder? Is that whatever you had?
I just dropped over.
All right, Eric? Sam? All right, Randy?
Go ahead and say it, just split it out.
Well, it is nice, and to see that the crews did that themselves. I mean, it's professional, it's well done. It's neat to see that kind of, and then see that that same, those same individuals helped put shelves in the library. That's what's nice about living in a small town.
Great, thank you Randy. Joe?
Yeah, I wanna add, you know, I know the electric department had some situations that they had to address as well, and they did a great job getting those done in as quick as possible. That was, it's always interesting to know what goes on with electricity. It can be a five-minute fix or a five-hour fix, depending on the, how trivial it can be. So I appreciate that, and then just as well, it's neat to see that we have a vast amount of employees that have a lot of talks and trades that they can be used across the facet of the city and not just one door. That's always, always good to see, to utilize that. And I wanna say thanks to the staff for giving us the draft agenda man, too. That was very helpful with us being able to see that, see what's going, what's happening, maybe coming down the pipe, so that was, that was very good. Then I think, I think that's something. Thank you.
Austin?
No, I don't wanna say something that's not positive. I didn't get a chance to look at it, but I heard the boards going out to the doc at like Perry since all this water and rain is less than desirable and might be kind of rotten and risky risk.
Yeah, we, I know at least during the fireworks, we put out barricades and things because the other, not passable right now. You probably can't see because they're covered, but all the boards have kind of floated away. And if you try to walk out on those, you're gonna have some serious issues, so I appreciate you bringing that up. We are getting out once the water goes right down.
Thank you.
Scott? I say ditto on Sammy, Randy, and Joe. Not Austin.
Well, good deal, well, thank you everybody, and I mean, really to commend all of our departments, and we had, our department is working on leaks through town. You, like Joe mentioned, the electric one working during the storm, and this department working on the streets. It's nice to see our city employees taking care of these issues, and we're not having to wait on contractors or things like that. We're able to take care of a lot of these things in-house, and for them to be doing it quickly. Really.
You know, the parks department's having a hard time keeping up right now with the way the grass is growing, and it's, it's just a common problem across, but they're doing a very good job of keeping up. I mean, not to say that they're having a hard job, hard time doing their job, it's just constant mowing, and it's growing about as fast as you're cutting it down, so.
I appreciate you saying that, and they've even been downing an employee, that one of their three full-timers, a month ago. So they're working on placing her, but you would hardly notice when they're just going full speed, so. Seriously, thanks for all the remarks, I'll pass it on. To see the support that the elected officials give to staff, I think is really encouraging them, so thank you.
Yeah. All right. Well, item number six, our city manager remarks.
No, I should've just waited ten seconds.
Yeah.
I have a couple of things that you guys may find interesting. One is the truck stop update, which I'll let Bryce talk a little bit about, because I've said this before, this has been kind of his baby from day one, and predates me, so let's start with that. Bryce, do you mind just giving council an update on?
Yeah, I did a little email on that today. Asef, who we've been working with, sent me a text, and we also spoke. He said that civil engineering is finalizing drawings after the ODOT recommendations, so the plans are coming. Hopefully in the next few days, the engineer will be done. Structural drawings will be ready by or before the end of the month. The architecture's already ready. They're working with a low bank for financing, and they have a good relationship so far. Their hope is to have, begin digging and working by the, by October. Today, I sent Asef a copy of our site plan application and a copy of our site plan ordinance to send to his engineer. We do need to have a site plan hearing. In addition, now, long-term planning, and you know, I don't know what this will do, but I had thought about it before, but long-term planning would, would, would make us consider acquiring a right-of-way easement on the side of the road, for an access road at some point. Now, there may be room in the, in the, in the Department of Transportation right-of-way, and so Matt will really asking you if you would look at that, at the American Inn, you know, what kind of right-of-way is there? If I actually make that request, then let's see what's there and what we might be able to get from the state, because since engineering drawings are done, I mean, they might have shift or something, but you know, a long-term planning for an access road there would be, would be bright, and so that is something that, that we need to do, but that also can be a part of the, of the site plan, so. Good, good news?
Yeah, fantastic news. Any questions for Bryce on that? I know that's one that the community has asked a lot about. A couple of other updates, I've had several people ask about the Piccon Drive, the sewer line behind them's there, the yards and kind of how we left those. From what I talked to Vernon about, hey, we smoothed them out the best we can, waiting because naturally what normally happens is settle, and then we'll have to kind of put more dirt in, but Vernon said that they look, they look pretty good right now, about as good as they can without, without going in and fixing that settlement, which they have to wait to do. Hospital remodel, we had the fifty percent inspection done on the fire side of things this week, passed without any issues there, so that's exciting. That project's moving forward very well. A staff update, as many know, the building department, we lost the director not too long ago. Good news is, we've replaced that director with Matt Biswell, and then we actually had a verbal agreement agreed to today from Jesse Holt. So, pretty exciting there to have those two, and then Renee is kind of a dream team for that department. And then the last I wanted to mention is, unfortunately, I got the news back that we didn't get the overpass grant this year. I'd talked before that because of all the cuts at the federal level, I wasn't really expecting that to be a positive outcome, but yeah, we didn't get it. So only thirty cities nationwide got the, got a grant for that, so funding's a really cut. The good news is, next year, a year after, it's that same grant process, and then we have an applicant that can be reused, so it wasn't a waste of time. But those are kind of my updates. Questions for me?
Anybody in Oklahoma happen to be one of those?
Yeah, there was one, I didn't know the name of the town, I, it felt small, but I don't know, in terms of size.
Did you say the community development director was Matt Biswell, or?
We don't actually have a director in that department, but we just have a team of employees. So you have Matt Biswell doing the commercial and the fire inspections, site plan reviews, and building plan reviews, and then you have Jesse doing the residential side. He'll also do some code enforcement, and Renee will kind of team up with him on that, so they'll both tackle that together. So I'm really, I feel like the outcome for this couldn't have been better. We have a fantastic team now, Mesa is gonna do an awesome job.
Who will, who will do, do in the role of the community development director?
So it's actually a position that's never been approved by the city council. Was a director for that department, but is a building, building inspections department, so we don't actually have a community development director, that's not an approved position.
Joe, a lot of that function I'd care of means notice. Well, getting the processes, but the broader thing, I don't, you know, that's.
I also did have the ordinance today, and that is who we, that state, that's who we go to for the specifics.
So we probably, we probably ought to have somebody designated.
We need to amend that, or, yeah.
Thanks, Joe, that's good to know.
All right, any other questions for Nate? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Item number seven, Chief Agent Officer Report on the June twenty-twenty-five financial report.
Well, the good thing I got you is the budget amendments and what we did last month, and what maybe pretty much are gonna be spot-on, or what we need to finish out the year. So it wasn't anything exciting that came up in the month of June that we really need to concern ourselves with, so that being in place. Give you a couple of highlights from the year. Total sales tax of the year was up about eighteen percent over what we had originally budgeted, which was good for us, you know, so plus a, about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of additional tax collected. On the sales tax side, use tax was up about nine percent, which gave us about fifty-six thousand dollars more than what we usually had planned on bringing in from that standpoint. So both of our tax collections were up and always good. Now, sales tax downer, that I have to tell you about July, so just this fiscal year, we started down five percent on sales tax, our use taxes lagged. So one of the reasons that we tried to budget conservatively, you know, and that's down five percent over prior year and month, so you know, that July lag, not exactly what we want to see. If you remember, sales taxes collected on a two-month lag, or the money, the dollars I'm telling you are two-month lagged, so it's really May activity, whenever we talk about it, but May's activity in the, sales tax-wise, was down. But hey, still a piece. The.
So Russ?
Yes.
Walk me through that one more time, I'm sorry. You said the overall sales tax was, uh?
For last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, twelve months, over that twelve-month period, general fund was up eighteen percent over the prior year.
Same period last year.
Same period prior year. Second piece, the bad news was, if I compare July of twenty-five to July of twenty-four, we are down five percent. So, normally I'll give you guys a whole bunch of those numbers, but.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, so we're down five percent on this year's sales tax collection. We budget conservatively, can't remember on any of our, we budget ten percent inky in that, so that we don't have, have all of that money setting there, but that is, that is down. Other operating pieces, you know, like I mentioned, all the expenses pretty much in line with what we, what we expect for anything big that kicked out. We are collecting, hotel motel tax does include two months of a makeup piece in month's number, so we're trying to get that number back to the full piece there, so we're looking good on hotel motel tax. As far as utilities go, you know, we're gonna finish just right at a hundred percent pretty much of our sewer, our, our electric and water, our sewer is up, just, it's over about a hundred-and-ten percent, but if you'll notice, our sewer loss and our sewers have exceeded that, so the one department that we didn't quite meet the budget and profit was in sewer, which, guys, things happen, you know, we did, it's just those things. But other than that, the numbers are looking good as far as the PFA goes. As far as our electric goes, you know, I always tell you what our PCA is that is for the month, again, you might as well call it zero, it's point zero 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 four cents, so a very, just might be difference. Matter of fact, I was looking back over this year, from January until July, we only had one month, was actually a positive PCA number, the other four, or the other five were the big numbers that we've run through. Now, mind you, they're negative by like this much, so it's not like we're, we're over or under in that particular, but guys, all in all, you know, I mean, a good year, there is, there is the net transfer out, one other thing on the general fund, there is the net transfer out of about two-point-three million dollars that has to go out of the general fund, gets kicked over into PFA related hospital transfers, so that number, sorry, if you're looking at a lot of mine in the general fund, we really didn't make that kind of money. So once we get that transfer booked, we'll, that's really what you will see for year-end numbers. Usually I tell you, these are what you're gonna see on your audit, these are what you're gonna see on your audit after we get that last transfer booked, and get that. Other than that, I'll take any questions you guys have.
All right. Thank you, Russ. Nobody has any questions? Onto item number eight, received presentation by Kate Karis, quarterly report from the Perry Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to present our Q2 report for 2025. And we have been really focused quarter on strengthening our partnerships, supporting our local business partners, and trying to promote more community engagement. It's been a big focus of the chamber this quarter. We welcomed nine new members, which was exciting for us, bringing total active membership to 206 members. And I had the privilege of attending the OCC CEO Retreat, which is a Oklahoma Chamber of Commerce Executives Retreat that's held annually. And comparatively with our population, the amount of businesses that we have that are active members in our chamber, our ratio is very, very high compared to a lot of towns. So that was super encouraging for me to see so many of our local businesses seeing the value and being a part of our Chamber of Commerce and the networking opportunities and support that we provide to them. So that was exciting. We did three ribbon cuttings, which are always exciting to me. One was at Daylight Donuts with the transfer of ownership, that's still extremely exciting. And they're doing the other was with Roscoe Perry Meal House, which has, I think, become a staple for all of us. And they're doing wonderful on the south side of the square. And then Turquoise Bee Nutrition, and they purchased the old Redline Nutrition and rebranded. So it's under new ownership, new name, and they're doing great there also. So it was exciting to get to rally around them and support them and welcome them to our communities. We had a great turnout from local community members to supporting those businesses, which I love seeing. Not only our board of directors attending these events, but the larger community, other business owners showing up to support our new businesses. It's exciting.
Bless you.
And we conducted onsite visits with our members to better understand their needs. This is something Linda, my executive assistant, and I have been a single on a lot, is really trying to get a pulse on what our members need and how we can serve them better. And our big campaign that we're running right now that hopefully everybody has seen flyers and social media posts about Purchase and Perry, we do two big retail campaign pushes every year, one in the summer, because typically our J months are very slow for our retail businesses. January is always so right after the holidays, and then June and July during the summer are always notoriously slow. So we try to incentivize our citizens to shop local and support local. And the way that we do that is if you purchase anything at a relocation in Perry, you save your receipt, take a picture of it and upload it to the Google form that we have. And every purchase at a chamber business gets two entries into our drawing. Non-chamber businesses is one entry, and we're giving away four $250 prizes. So we did this last year and then did it again at Christmas. Christmas always seems a little bit higher participation, but we've seen great numbers already. We have a couple weeks left, and we've already had over 125 receipts submitted. And the number on your report that you received has actually changed. When I totaled, we're at $7,536 in total retail spending, and only of people who've submitted receipts. So that's exciting to see people rallying around our community members. And there's always a lot of excitement when we go to draw our winners. So we'll do that at the end of next week. And if it's a community engagement, yes.
How do you enter? Again?
We have a QR code on all of the forms that you see around town, the flyers. And there's also a link on our Facebook page to a Google form where you can upload this.
Yeah, it's super simple. Isn't it good?
Thank you for asking.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull out.
There you go. I go into my Sonic, you know, receipts and upload all of them. So it's it's great. And I even encourage, even though my board members aren't eligible to win the prizes, I encourage everyone to upload their receipts. We really want to see a lot of support for our businesses. And we'll run reports at the end of that campaign so we can see where people spent money. And we'll let those local businesses know how many dollars came in for their business as a result of that campaign. So hopefully build some value with our members. We did host a couple of networking events. We had a coffee chamber, and then Noble County Meats also hosted a coffee. And I never would have paired coffee and meat sticks together, but it was great. And we had a really good turnout. Hunter and I did is wonderful there, and they did a great job serving our community at that retail location. I love that they opened that up on the square. I think it draws even more business than the processing facility out on 64. So that's exciting to have them there. I am heavy in planning for the Cherokee Strip Celebration and have been for several months now. It seems to consume most of my time, if not all of it. And we've got a lot of exciting things. Everyone's heard the carnival is coming back this year. That will be held Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in the South Wadley Parking Lot on the southeast corner of the square. And we are also actively working to secure sponsors and recruit vendors, both in food vendors to attend. And then we're working on registration for our 5K and 10K race that we have every year. So if anybody wants to run, or if you'd rather sit on a parade float, be sure to reach out to us and let us know. We'd love to have lots of community participation to make this event bigger than it's been in the past. So excited to see it grow this year. And any questions about Cherokee Strip that I can answer? We're going to start selling wristbands for the carnival at the chamber office on August 1st. I believe Ditch Witch is another corporation here in town that's also going to have wristbands onsite to sell to employees as well. So and there are some discounts if you buy multiple days and entertain your kids for multiple days of carnival. And we have really focused on increasing our outreach through our newsletter, through social media. And we really tried to highlight a lot of our businesses a lot more on our Facebook page and in our social media channels. And that seems to be getting really good feedback. Strategic planning and partnerships, we are I'm relieved and excited to announce that we have submitted our application for our 501(c)(3). We were trying to revive a previously held 501(c)(3) that the chamber had over a decade ago, and that was proving to be very difficult. There was a lot of tape that we were having to jump through. So we, after receiving advice, we decided to start a new foundation. So we submitted the paperwork for that. Unfortunately, we didn't get that approved in time for the chamber for the carnival grant that we were applying for through the Malzahn Family Affiliated Fund. So Nate and I worked together to submit that through the city of Perry. And so hopefully, if the Malzahn Family Affiliated Fund does approve that grant, then that will be part of our support that we receive, you all. And all of those funds will go to pay for the carnival. It's about $3,000 to bring the carnival to Perry. So far, the chamber has paid 10% of that down. So it would be wonderful if we had a grant to help support that so that all the monies that we make this year can be invested next year into bringing an even bigger and better carnival. So other things we'd like to do, this 501(c)(3) accreditation would allow us to pursue pursue grant opportunities to support our small businesses, to be able to dream a little bit bigger on economic development and the role the chamber plays in that. And then we also really want to incentivize businesses to come to Perry through offering some grant opportunities similar to what Laura has set up with Main Street, with her facade grants and interior renovation grants. We'd love to be able to broaden that scope to wider Perry area and not limit it to just Main Street District. And we also have dreams of launching our student ambassador program this fall. We previously had an ambassador program at the chamber, and it kind of lapses. But we've seen a lot of interest in our students wanting to get involved in local commerce and local retail and learn more about business entrepreneurship, ownership. So we're excited to launch that in the fall. And then hopefully we'll be able to provide some scholarship opportunities through those grants as well for our student ambassadors. So that's kind of a, I feel like I just word vomited because there's been so much that's been going on. But we also are going to launch some fall business workshops and start doing some roundtables in our community to get community members together who are in similar fields and to be able to talk to them about their needs and how we can support them and things that they'd like to see with their industry. And we are also, we switched right from Purchase and Perry to Shop Perry Be Mary, and that will happen in November and December. So that'll be our other big purchasing campaign that we do. And we're also running a fall promotional mailer opportunity. So it's just another opportunity for our local businesses to purchase a space on a car mailer that will be chamber logoed and will be distributed to 5,000 homes in Noble County. So not just in Perry, but outside of the local Perry area. So we're getting applications for that right now if people would like to purchase ad space. And then we also have our chamber guide, which I hope everybody has seen. This year's chamber guide, the front cover is a beautiful picture of our courthouse right there in the square. We are excited that we've decided that our main story in our guide for 2026 will be the Centennial of the Comeback Cafe. So we really want to celebrate with Merrily and and now Scott Beauchez, which is exciting. So we're going to do a big cover spread in there for them to highlight that. The chamber guide is kind of our biggest tourism piece that we provide every year. It's given out to all of the hotels, all the local tourist centers. And so we want to really use that as an opportunity to highlight this really awesome occasion in Perry. It's not very often we get to celebrate a business being open 100 years. So we're excited to celebrate with them. That's all that I have for you this evening. We really appreciate your community support. And thank you for the increase in funding. We're able to do a lot more this year and are really excited for all of the dreaming that we've been able to do as a board and just really appreciate you all staying beside us and supporting us in all that we're doing. Anybody have any questions?
That was a lot of info.
It's a lot of info. Thank you all so much.
Item number nine, presentation of update by Matthew Ko of Simran Valley Engineering LLC on proposed water project funding opportunities. Direction action as deemed appropriate. We're getting home by dinner, right?
That's right. That's right. That's right. I hate the meal, if you can't tell. So so we've, you know, been working on several water projects. We've been working on the water killouts, with the design of the sludge box at the water treatment plant. We're also doing a capital improvement plan for the water treatment plant and identifying some projects to take on sooner rather than later and some projects that were taken later. We'll just kind of run the list out. So the sludge box plans and specs on that are complete. They're they're done. They've been sent to EQ. We submitted that under the drinking water state revolving fund program. And and we need to discuss the funding program shortly. But we'll get into that in just a minute. The water main survey is basically complete. We have about two blocks left to survey. They've been surveyed. We were just waiting on utility locates. That seemed to be the hardest thing to do on the whole survey was to actually get the utility locators out, not the city, but USIC to get out and actually locate where communications cables were, gas lines, things like that, things that should be reflected on the plans before we go in and start excavating and avoid unexpected conditions when the contractor's starting on this project. Many of the portions of the water main killout might require submission to DEQ. So once we, once this data is currently being processed, and I will be able to put this project out to bid very soon, depending on the funding mechanism we choose to go with. So like I said, we're going to talk funding mechanism shortly. The other project that we identified as critical is a boost up station to serve the 12-inch loop. We have developments going on over here on the 12-inch loop side of town, and we need to increase the capacity of our booster station feeding, feeding not only the town but all the businesses and development that are occurring over there. So that's another major project that that we've been looking at preliminarily. And I believe we've applied for some funding for that project through a prep grant that we should know if we're going to get fairly soon. We've also applied for the CDBG grant, which we should know towards the end of the month, kind of how we are scoring. That one we may may score well on because we do, we don't have a consent order, but we do have a notice violation due to residuals levels in our lagoons that we tied that to. So I'm hopeful that maybe that one could come through. So in total, we we looked at about $5.5 to $6 million worth of potential infrastructure projects that we have. And we looked at potentially receiving the $600,000 of match money through CDBG for one portion of the project. We're also considering possibly getting $1 million through DWSRF as potential principal forgiveness loan like we did when we did the the 12-inch loop or town. We were we were able, we were the first entity to receive that one during that fiscal year on that program. A lot has changed at DWSRF since then. There's been a lot of personnel change, management change, and the way they're handling projects currently with that program. But we also are looking at potentially the the prep funding, which would fund, I believe that would fund almost the whole cost of the booster station if we were to receive that one. And we should know, I'm not sure of the timeline on that one. We're kind of at Congress mercy on when we'll know if that comes available. So, you know, in short, close to $2 million potential of grant money out there, you know, and we have, you know, just say $5.5 million needs that we've identified. And if we can get the DWSRF principal forgiveness, that's another million. But they are targeting disadvantaged systems with the consent orders. And if we were wanting to borrow the full amount of money through the DWSRF program, we would have environmental requirements. We would have to do a full environmental that is going to set our project back four to six months. You're also going to tie federal provisions because the drinking water state revolving fund is a loan program that's administered through the EPA. So it has all the federal requirements. That's why you do the environmental, then all of the all the federal provisions, American Iron Steel, be it the BABA requirements are still, those have not been removed yet. So those are still in play. So you, I really don't want to tie those funds to water treatment plant improvements and things of that nature. You know, if it was just pipe in the ground and things like that, it wouldn't be a big cost driver. But in this case, when we're talking about mechanical systems, electrical systems, things like that, it can drive the cost up and the benefit of getting $1 million gets diminished quickly. Not to mention, we're looking at delay in project delivery. And we want to start construction killing out water mains yesterday, not not today. So our other option is through the financial insurance program through the through the water board where they issue bond debt. It's AAA rated, so you get a great rate. You can borrow money for up to 30 years for improvements. There's a deal closing in December, so applications will be due in November. And I believe right now that that bond package is about $125 million right now currently. So it's a good one to jump on because some of the some costs associated with issuing the bond debt is spread out across more communities. So you don't have to absorb as much as if you're jumping on a smaller FAU deal. That money becomes available to the community immediately after closing. So you would be able to utilize it to reimburse yourself for any costs that you've incurred for engineering services up to this point for projects that you're borrowing money for, for the line killouts, for the sludge box, for the water treatment study, you know, any future projects that we have not started on, such as the booster station or the final design of the water treatment plant improvements. So it's it's a good program. It's worth considering because we can start sooner, even before closing. You were to, you would pass a reimbursement resolution. So if we were to start the water main killout next month, any any cost up to, you had that resolution, you would say dollar amount we're going to for construction. They consider engineering planning, and that's reimbursable expense, but you would be able to reimburse yourself through that. You could still use this money to leverage with the CDBG project, and we would keep the sludge box standalone project because it would have federal ties associated with that one. But we would be able to isolate like water treatment plan improvements, booster station improvements, things like that from the requirements. Even if we get the prep funding for the booster station, those prep funds have not had federal ties associated with those. The sewer main that we did to the sewer corners of development through whether the the prep funding, okay. And we've, I've done a couple industrial park developments through the prep funding, and there there is no Davis Bank requirements, no American Iron Steel, no no federal strings attached to these commercial development projects. So I think it's worth considering pursuing that as a funding opportunity moving forward. It's just a matter of, you know, what, how are we willing to borrow? You know, what's, what are we able to take on? And this is kind of where Russ can come in, and he's looked at several scenarios, you know, as far as, well, if we get this grant, this is what this would look like. Problem is, is by November, we need to know what dollar amount we do. But hopefully, we'll know if we're going to get some of these grants before then. So we can decide this is what we want to borrow. Or if you have additional water and water infrastructure needs that is not on this list, you have quite a bit of leeway in how you spend these dollars. I mean, if, you know, if you have money left over, you can say, okay, we want to, we want to improve this area in our sewer system. We want to do a line extension here. We want to. So if you borrow too much, you're able to additional. If you don't borrow enough, well, then then you have to shave.
So does applying for the loan and being accepted eliminate your vulnerability to get some of the grants?
No.
Well, it does limit part of the DWSRF piece because that we either choose A or B. We either choose FAP or DWSRF for part of that program. And by the way, I just spoke with Alan just before we got in here. I don't know what it was about today, but I had four phone calls related to borrowings and water projects. Everybody, apparently today, I guess Alan was just on a kick or something, calls because I had I had four different cities talking about it. But the the big part that came out was the under the DWSF forgiveness piece, he said But the, the big part that came out of it was the, under the DWS forgiveness piece, he's saying probably 800,000, not a million, is, is now going to be the number that they think is coming out. But he said it's plus about nine to 10 months. So, you know, if we were looking at, at November, you know, we're probably looking at really September of next year before we know anything on that. So really, these kind of projects that we need to get going and we need to do, probably need to be done under, under that program. But we need to figure out exactly what we're going to do in that piece, you know? How much of that, how much are we comfortable borrowing, you know, I mean, and how much?
We already applied for these two grants, this prep and the CDBG. Did you already do that?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll know, we'll know those answers. The, the FAP is closing in December. Probably, I said November, October would be a good time to make sure we really had a solid plan on what we were going to do with that FAP. You know, how much we need to be in that FAP, loan portfolio for.
Sure, naive, I mean, it's just a line of credit where we can go, we're going to borrow five million, but we're only going to draw what we need and we pay the rest. Can you pay back the loan with grants?
The, so on, on the AP, it's a seven, it's a prepay after seven years. So if we went in for $5 million, let's just, let's say we only got half a million dollars. If we went in for $5 million, we have a million dollars at 30 year AM, 5% is what Alan said to kind of build them on right now. Which is a little higher than what I was expecting, but 30 years, 5%. And for the first seven years, there's no prepayment, but after seven years, we can start prepaying. So what we sign into this bond issuance for, we have to keep it at least seven years, a inch on that.
Is it available to refi after that year or not?
Well, it's prepaid, so.
Yeah, so you can refi after seven years.
We can do whatever we want. Let's hope that interest rates fall between now and, you know, and in November, whenever that one goes out. And the size is going to help too, you know, I mean, like, like Matt said, I mean, it's a hundred thousand million dollar FAP portfolio that they're putting together. So that, that will help.
That's probably why you're getting four or five calls out, because everybody wants to jump on with the bigger ones because it's.
Less cost.
That's right.
Overall, less cost whenever the whole project rolls out. They're just, they're pushing paper and a lot of the same thing.
So just to give the community kind of a background on this, we originally, the plan was to apply for the DWSRF.
Right.
And that's how we're going to help fund some of these projects. Because we knew through the rate increases, we'd be able to borrow money and pay that debt down with the rate increases of these water projects. Now we're seeing that the WSRF deal with all the, the federal and state issues that are going on is a mess and it's taking a lot longer. And then there are some other drawbacks that we are getting concerned about because of timing. And we need to get these, this main killout done as quickly as possible, right? Because we don't want to have another winter with, without this being done. And so for the community's benefit, you know, I wanted to give that background. We're now looking at this other, this other option of this FAP funding, which is kind of where stuff is falling right now in terms of recommendation. Hoping to get council guidance on that tonight.
Well, and part of the line killouts, so we can start getting street stuff. I mean, this is, this is part of that catapulting issue of until we get everything under the ground done, we can't do anything on top of the ground.
We can fill the tires, we can raise the pressure, all, all the things that we want from our system are tied to this.
Yeah, so, and I mean, I can start developing bid packages and, you know, have them ready to roll out. We just don't need to spend any construction dollars until we have that reimbursement resolution in place that says, yes, we're committed to the FAP. You know, because you'll pass a resolution to, to borrow the money. And at that time, we would pass a resolution that said, we're going to repay ourselves up to, you know, a million and a half dollars or $2 million, whatever it may be, that, that we're spending on that water main killout. But it would allow us to start, you know, much earlier, like this summer. Rather, rather opposed to having to wait for every bureaucracy to comment where the Park Service cares if we kill out our water lines or work on our treatment plant or the Corps of Engineers or FEMA or the Fish and Wildlife Service. And it, it, there's a whole list of entities that we have to, State Department of Preservation Society, you know? I mean, you name it, we send them a letter and ask their opinion on our project. And then sometimes they come back and say, well, we'd like to do an archaeological dig at your water treatment plant site because you just never know. And this has happened on CDBG projects for, you know, outside of even. O Sage Nation has requested archaeological digs in Weatherford, you know, for an industrial park project. And they can, you know, once this is to the BIA, they're able to provide their input. And if they want an archaeological dig, well, they get an archaeological dig and guess who gets to foot the bill for the archaeological dig? We, that's right. And we also have to foot the bill for environmental, plus we're going for something that the way the program is right now, I don't feel that we have a very highly likelihood of receiving principal forgiveness as a tier two community that doesn't have an active consent order going against disadvantaged communities with active consent orders and without much financial capacity. I, I see these funds being allocated to communities that can't afford to do projects that have severe public health and safety issues. And quite frankly, we don't have those.
So we're afraid we're going to wait and then get a no by anyways.
That's right.
So Russ and I have kind of chatted and determined that we're pretty comfortable with, did we say 300 or 350,000 a year that we're kind of wanting?
That's taken those two grants in consideration that we might bid in any day, I guess.
Well, so, so the way we were looking at is what annual debt service are we, would be willing to commit to? And then if we keep that annual debt service between 300 and 350,000 dollars, you know, we could fund that every year based on our current capital plan and those kinds of things. In theory, what we would do is then borrow that max amount that falls in, in that 300 to 350, you know, number. Then start down the list of the projects. Any of the grants that come, are they going to give us the next project on the list that we need to do? So that's, that's kind of, you know, and, and as bad as this is, maybe not the next project on the list, but the next emergency that comes up that becomes the next project on the list, you know? Because as, as we go down through this every year with aging different structures and everywhere else, while we may have these four that we want to do and then we have the next two, somebody at nine or 10 may become five by the time we get to that point.
But we are getting better, you know, knowing those down. I'll be the first to say our list is perfect yet. We don't have every asset. In fact, water towers, we don't have those on the list. How soon are those going to go back?
We'll have, we'll have a capital improvement plan for the water treatment plant. I mean, we've identified, you know, about $12 million worth of, of upgrades at the water treatment plant that ultimately need to be fed out over certain years. You know, we haven't even out to the wastewater treatment plant and seen that. And I mean, Russ, I mean, as far as being in the hole on wastewater, how much was repair of the equipment at the wastewater treatment plant? You know, I mean, we, we, we don't really have a good, we have, we have manual bar screen, we have no grit removal. There's, there's a lot of improvements at the wastewater treatment plant that can be undone. So it's, it's, pick the debt service you're comfortable with. And then if you get grants, pile those on top of those and knock out as much as you can. And, and then keep shooting for more grants because we got to keep drawing grants.
All, all the, all the exciting stuff that we're planning around both, whether it's west side of Perry or downtown, or even keeping some of the industry that we've got here that requires some reliable water and sewer systems. That's right. We can't afford another week of asking ditch which not to build anything. They'll find a community where they can build every week.
And the booster station is going to really enhance our capability to serve industrial development. We're, we're going to situate this booster pump station here on the north side of the 12 inch loop. Where right now we're pumping to our on the south side of the 12 inch loop. And then that water has to go all the way around the loop. So when we go and put this booster pump station here on our side of the loop, now we can pump from the north to the tower. And the tower can feed back during, say, if we had a fire event, a large fire event, now you would be feeding in from, from this side of town. And you would have the half million gallons of store in 12 inch loop. So you're, you, you've basically reduced a dead end line. Because right now that's what that 12 inch business, dead end line all the way around back to ditch which. It could only be fed back around that way. If we put that booster station in there, now we're pushing water in from the north and back south. And the water can come back from the south to the north. And so that greatly enhances the capacity of our water system out that direction. And if sooner corner development develops further or the frontage along the interstate develops or we get some big, some major player at the industrial park move in, those are all major pieces of infrastructure that we can use to market the site and say, hey, we, look at the capacity. We have the sewer capacity to be able to serve it. We have, we have, this is just setting area for growth, I mean.
So it sounds like, it looks like, as I've looked around, that council's comfortable with me kind of pursuing this with staff, looking at FAP funding and kind of going the other direction versus the initial plan of the DWSRF. Does that sum things up?
So that five and a half, six million dollars, that, that's everything that we've talked about thus far as to making, making all the improvements. That's after your, your water survey and everything that needs to be updated.
Yeah, that, that's just sludge box, that's kind of our mains, that's the booster pump station. And then doing some, and, and doing some work at not just the sludge box, but doing some work at the water treatment plant.
Not all of it.
Not all the work, but replacing some mechanical equipment, getting, getting an updated skater system at the water treatment plant, replacing some, some scrapers that don't work anymore and automating some processes at the water treatment plant. And the other thing that I, I forgot to mention, I was mentioning this is that Nate went and met with Stillwater the other day about the call water line and transfer to McMurtry. So that assured us that the maximum amount of call water that would be placed in McMurtry at any time would be under 5%. I'm comfortable with that. That's, 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 that's a pretty good blended rate. Now, if that were got higher, then, you know, I would be a little bit more worried about the quality of our treated water. Call water is not as easy to treat as McMurtry water. McMurtry is a, a pristine water source. It's, it's, it's our most important water resource that we have at the city. It's great to use in conjunction with Perry Lake water because McMurtry waters sometimes is so clear, it is difficult to treat. The turbidity comes in so low, it's hard to, to get a flock and get things settled out. So sometimes we want to mix in a little bit of Perry red dirt in with the McMurtry water. So we can, so we can actually have some particles to form a flock, which is basically, we had a polymer that basically forms a big fit. And it catches all the particulates for the settling process in the said basins before we go to filtration. Now, if that percentage got higher, you would still be able to treat it. But, you know, there's, there's a reason Stillwater's on, or means, it's because they fight disinfection byproducts. Right now, we're still feeding chlorine and we're not under violation for disinfection byproducts. Chloramines from their own disinfection byproducts, they're just not regulated by the EPA yet. But the Oto Missouri Tribe has a water treatment plant and they're treating water from the call pipeline, but they're not softening. And they're not doing the same process that, that Stillwater is through their lime softening. But they fight disinfection, disinfection byproducts in their system. And I've, several years ago, I did an ration project for them in a tower and it, it got their numbers down to where they've been in compliance much, much more frequently. So we could handle a lesser water quality, but we also parry late that if McMurtry got a higher percentage of call water in, we could bring in more Perry Lake water to dilute it down. So that's something else we've been being mindful of during our capital improvement planning for this. And we just got the full report this week too, that they've turned for their blending analysis. And I'm, and I'm tearing through that right now.
Do we have any control over what blending rate they do?
You know, there's, they change, it used to be under the jurisdiction of the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for Inter Basin Transfers. Now basically Oklahoma Water Resources Board just cares, do you have the water rights? Or are you going to diminish the beneficial use of the water? The water's still treatable, okay? The treatable limits are, are very high in TDS is what they consider usable water under Water Resource Board rules. It has been transitioned over to the Department of Environmental Quality to determine, you know, are, are they adversely affecting the, the new basin through introduction of algae nutrient loadings, potentially invasive species, things like that, treat, treatability of water and things like that. So I've reached out to DEQ. I'm trying to get a call back, but.
So these maybe.
There, there are little sorts that.
Solid maybe?
I am trying, I, I am trying to make sure that we can have, what I want, what I want to see is I want to see an operation guidelines for how much water they're going to put from Call Lake into McMurtry. You know, I want, I don't want friends of McMurtry to say, hey, the lake's six foot low. Fill it up, you know, because I don't like it when it's low, you know, which is, you know? But we dealt with a while back, you know, they were, they were calling saying, hey, we think you got a leak on your pipeline. The lake's, the lake's down six or seven feet and we were pumping water because we're utilizing the water source. Well, you know what lake evaporation is? It's over 50 inches here and we're in a drought, okay? And it's a 900 acre lake, 900 acres, not four, that's, you know, 300 acre feet of water. That's a lot of water that evaporates. We, and I looked at and I was like, if we used our full allocation off that lake, we would pull it down. Okay, so it was just like, you know, it was kind of a posthumous favor. They, you know, thought that Perry was draining McMurtry lake. But, you know, we, we went back and forth several email chains and we got that square lake.
We just need a, we just need a written assessment is what we need, so.
Yeah, which we have worked, the final report for the call blending analysis that was turned into DEQ. Hasn't been approved by DEQ yet. I'm in communication with DEQ, trying to figure out if we can get some language in that allowance that says, here's the thresholds in which you can put water in. And I think it needs to be set on an emergency level, the lake is down to this. I mean, they need it because they have major repairs to their pipeline that they need to undergo. Where they're going to need to pull water from McMurtry. And they have some water rights, but they have enough water rights for all their needs. So they need to be able to transfer some water in there to offset that. And that's fine. It ma, it's a good plan. It makes sense and we want to be good neighbors with them and work with them. But we want to do it in a, in a manner that we don't compromise the quality of our.
Joe, you had a question?
Well, I was, I, I guess, I guess my, I would love to do everything at once and borrow all that money. But what are we giving up financially to do anything else if we, if we do borrow $6 million to, to do it all at once? I mean, all the things that we want to do, I mean, what are we going to have to give up for that, for that $6 million today just to do the water projects?
Well, you know, I mean, if you think, you guys kind of set a priority list, you know? And if we're following the priority list, these four things are going to be at the top of that priority. So we're not, we're going to be able to do all four of those. So what we're giving up then is items five and six and seven and eight. But we weren't going to get five, six, seven and eight without doing these. When, what Nate was saying earlier was, you know, I mean, we built, whether we built the rates, whether we built capital projections of what we were talking about, we were trying to stay between 300 and $300,000 in annual debt service, okay? Let's use the middle bar, 325, 5% for 30 years means we can spend right at $5 million. That's, it'll generate right at $5 million of funds to go out and start doing this. It's a little bit short of the five and a half that these projections are. But if we get some grants and, you know, CDBG, the prep grant, those come in, $5 million is probably a pretty good number for us to, to gauge on. So, you know, what we're really asking is commit 325,000. That was in the plan. We have to do, we have to do the water killout. We need to do, I mean, the water line killouts and do all the pressure. We can do the roads, we can do those. We got to do the booster pump, you know, I mean, that's not there. The sludge boxes are already an issue and coming up. So I guess what we're doing in these, we're not really giving something up. Because these are the things that we were going to do first anyhow. It's just how many, do we go borrow $3 million and only do a portion of them? Let that pay off quicker so that it's out of the, out of the till? Or do we go ahead and do these, the bigger part?
Do we have other debt services we're currently paying that will come off here in the next 10 years?
Yes, we have, we have three debt services that will come off in the next 10.
So that, that. So that, that could help us do some other projects in, in three years that we aren't currently banking on, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah. The, the extra projects will get picked up then as, as debt fall, as these other debt issues fall off. We have two coming up in 2028 and one coming up in 2030, you know, but as far as debts go that, that are out there, sewer, well, I take that back, one of those 28s was, was the ball fields and the, the road. But there's, the road portion of that debt 28 would, would come off. But yeah, we've got those three that are coming up. Then yes, we can go.
28, right?
28, yeah. But we can go put those, those other products into work. It, it's not like we're going to only be able to do this $5 million worth of projects for the next 30 years. You know, that's not what we're seeing. It's, and, you know, remember, there's still other capital outlay dollars. That's still leaving us, give or take $700,000 a year in capital outlay, you know, that, that we can go do city needs besides this water infrastructure stuff.
Words his mouth, but that much worries Joe that he wants, what caught my ear is that, you know, when you go build a house, you borrow the money for 30 years and if you want to do a rig or anything, you, you got to wait until 30 years or a, this is, it doesn't feel like a clone where can we still go do the $20 million worth of water projects that we need to do and tie this money up for 30 years?
Well, we're, no, I, I, I mean, not without committing other significant payment, you know, cash flow to that. You know, I mean, that other 20 million, it, right now, that other 20 million is going to have to wait until we either get a debt service that comes off, which the other debt service, about $8 million would be freed up over the next, over the next five years, you know. But I mean, but we're still not going to get to 20 million, you know, in that number without making some additional adjustments to, to revenue structure.
Yeah. The other thing, one more thing I'll say is, is that you have a major operational cost that reoccurs every three to five years that you're taking care of for part of the sledgebox problem. I mean, when we clean out those lagoons, you know, last time we did it, it was 300 some odd thousand dollars. That's, that's, that's closer to a half million dollar project now that's going to reoccur every three to five years. So, you know, you, you're borrowing 350,000, but you're saving eight to a hundred thousand dollars a year of unrealized, you know, operation costs that, that, that reoccurs time, not to mention the redundant water loss. So there's some unrealized savings that, that, that come about with doing projects like this, not to mention, you know, more efficient pumps and things like that. So it's, you know, it, you're, you're.
Well, I just, I just go back to the, and I'm thinking out loud here, but you go back to the street project. We, we borrowed all any to, to fix the streets and we're still paying on that debt. Everybody's going, well, where's the money at? Well, we spent it and now we're paying it back. So I, I don't want us to fall into the, fall into that similar trap. And then we're in a spot where we got all this money out for, for water and sewer and we don't have any left to fix water and sewer in 20 years. Maybe I'm not making sense.
No, I think the, the concern though is, these aren't fun projects that, that we wanted. These are needs, right? If you don't, if you don't do now, you won't have water and sewer in 20 years. These are absolute needs and we've known for months and months and months that these were needs. In fact, they were a huge part of the reason we raised rates, you know. We, we made a commitment to residents already by raising rates that we would do these projects.
Yeah, and you have to do those where we can do the streets anyway.
Yeah.
Have that for growth, for our developments, more customers, and the more customers, more business, more commerce that comes in, that increases your, your, your ability to take on more.
And we're still confident that there's grant money out there to pay for projects to eight, nine and 10.
I'm always, I, I will, I will go after every grant that I can, you know, smell.
Which we're still going with these, right?
Yeah.
Running after revenues is being to do these projects to have those, those other developments.
So i- if we just took this 300, let's do 300,000, it's just easier for me to multiply at this point. But if we just took this 300,000 and went down this list of four things, well, the booster pump, where's it going to play? Well, sledgeboxing needs to come per, you know, because of consent order. So now we're going to pay for five years, that 300,000 just to get the sledgebox done. And then after five years, then we're going to look at starting waterline killout, which is going to take us another seven years to get the waterline killout done. So now we're 12 years before we could even start on the street overlays in that section of town without going to borrow this money.
Didn't we just say we couldn't go another winter without starting any killout?
That's hoping that we don't have a bad winter.
So that, that's the, that's the only predic, you know, I mean, it, it's, I wish we had all the unlimited grant funds and I wish we had those dollars all available. But really the only way we're going to get these four key pieces taken care of right now is, is to go borrow this money, you know, and.
Well, and so frankly, you've already, you've already committed to doing this, you know, we're just, this isn't about can we borrow the money. This is, instead of borrowing it today, we're going to come in and borrow it this way. So that's, that's really the issue that we're talking about. You've already approved that.
I think Nate, when you were asking about if you started putting your plans together, I, I think for me personally, what I would like to just say is, is we're, we're going to go borrow this amounting. These, these are the go, the things that it's going to go fix. And then if some of this grant money comes in, what are the things we're going to go attack with that? And I think if I have that kind of a document in front of me, it would help me better understand what all we're talking about.
Okay. Any other thoughts or direction on this? Thank you.
I could pick you about $2 million worth of projects off the top hedge somewhere at the wastewater plant. I mean, it's.
We're going to the wastewater plant.
Put some, lend him my money, Matt.
I mean, this headworks and, and grit removal will save you over the long term at the wastewater treatment plant. So I mean, there's, and the force main going out there is getting pretty antiquated too. So yeah, we're not running out of stuff, but a capital improvement plan that just has a layout over the next, well, what's our 10-year plan? I mean, that's, that's what you really need is a 10-year planning document that says, here's a full, here's a full infrastructure assessment through streets, drainage, water, sewer, treatment, you know. Throw, throw, throw the airport in there too.
But we know for our water, we've got to get the sledgebox, booster station and those main killouts. We've talked about that a number of times. But yeah, if you guys can put together the document that Randy wants, but I think we need to go after the funding to get projects going.
I think so too. We've already raised the rates. I don't know why we would waste any more time.
Right.
It needs, I mean, we just need to start doing it.
Last, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Matt. All right. Item number 10. Discuss amendment to chapter 17, article 7 of Perry Municipal Code entitled Storm Water Management System. Yeah, so let me give a little bit of background here. We've talked for a long time. I mean, I think this predates me about having some kind of drainage ordinance in the city of Perry. Even since I've come in, I've had several, several pool come and approach me and say, hey, we need to do this. One of them was Matt. And with all the development we have going on in town, what's happening in these meetings is they're asking the question, what are you guys going to require on drainage? And our answer right now is, well, we would love it if you would do X, Y and Z, but we actually don't have any requirements. So you can do whatever you want, right? And luckily to this point, they've been really accommodating. But as development continues, you can't guarantee that's always going to be the case. So you really need some kind of drainage ordinance in place to hold as a standard for developers. And so I asked Matt to work with Bryson, put together this drainage ordinance. Frankly, I've, I skimmed through it. I tried to do a deeper read, but I just haven't had time. So I'm not 100% sure this is ready to go. But I did want to bring this to council because I know there are a few of you on council who have been very involved in the drainage side of things. And I wanted you to have an opportunity to look at this, to give any kind of feedback. So I guess what I'm saying is, that's kind of a background and don't trust this terms of saying Nate has, you know, rubber stamped or stamped this with his approval and it's 100% good to go. I, I think it probably is, but I, I can't give that guarantee.
There's really three pieces to it. The one piece we have adopted, and that is everybody pays $3. It goes into a drainage fund. We use that drainage fund to fix drainage problems. What it doesn't do is it doesn't allocate for each person, business, how much they're contributing to the drainage flow. This ordinance does that and you may not want it. Russ says you may not want it because when you do that, it gets crazy. I mean, it causes giant controversy. You know, it's a giant.
And saying, hey, by the way, guys, you owe us X number of dollars per year because you contribute to the drainage.
Per month, per month. Yeah. And it's not be dollars anymore. But when we originally did this, talked about doing that. But so that's what this ordinance does and what we might want to do, just stick with what we've got on that issue, ordinance, but that's the first issue. This is an issue we have to have development standards, drainage standards. And those are in there and, and those are set and those are good. The third thing is when there's any development in the town, and that's residential or commercial, is there going to be a fee that is assessed to that builder that goes into a pot and used for drainage improvements? Where did I read in some town that the fees are $60,000 for a lot that go to a city? Well, ours are zero. You know, that's what we, our impact fees are really zero. I mean, we don't have really any of those. But when admin, I mean, in most communities, there is a fee that's paid to the city that comes from the sale of that, the sale of that lot or that development. So that's the third piece of this. And the ordinance is fine. It's just really setting what those fees would be. You know, we're wanting to encourage development and, you know, some of those fees are, could perhaps be looked on as, as not encouraging development. But of course, then, you know, the, the other thought is you put burden on the, on the person that's bringing the problem to you and not on the widow woman, you know, and search security back in their homes. You put it where it's, where it should be placed, not on, you know, just everyone. So that's really what we have. Perhaps that one person, that one stays the way it is, or maybe it doesn't. But I, I think that kind of clearly tells you what this is, Matt.
But you're also providing mechanisms for them to offset impact fee. So you're saying, okay, if you use best management practices on your side and you mitigate downstream impacts on your site, then you can reduce that storm water impact fee. But if somebody wants to have been a huge development upstream and substantially needs to runoff volume downstream, well, then we're talking about major infrastructure improvements that are going to be required in the future to prevent downstream residents from flooding that we're going to have to talk about in the future. Like, well, how do we, how do we, we got to do a million dollar culvert project now because our flood elevations have increased feet because we've completely developed everything by the, the interstate that runs through town now.
So there's no way to grandfather existing residents and our businesses?
Well, there is. They just have store fees. So if a new developer wants to come in, the way this ordinance is written is like, how much impervious area do you have? How, how much volume of, what's the increase in volume of runoff you're, you're calling? What's the increase in peak flow rates from your site that you're incurring? And then you develop a fee schedule based off of that. And they can do things on their own side to decrease the volume of runoff leaving their site, to decrease the flow rate leaving the site. And, you know, it also talks about a master drainage plan too, and to where you could talk about regional detention facilities where you say you have a developer that comes in, he says, I want to build a subdivision, I want to do it in four phases. I can build detention ponds or evolve four phases, okay? Provides a mechanism to do that to where he can decrease his impact fee. He's mitigating downstream effects. Whereas if we have a site that is just not feasible, like, we don't have room on this lot, but we want to put this field, those once a week field, you know, we need it to be all asphalt paving, but we don't have any room for, for a detention pond or anything to mitigate. It also provides a mechanism for them to provide funding source for the city to utilize strictly for drainage improvements, which can be utilized where the city has, has drainage problems where. We, we do have drainage problems now and the more we grow and the more impervious area we have, the more goes. So I, I like it because it provides another funding mechanism that's going to lessen the financial woes. Just a matter of how do we structure that to where it's optimal, to where it doesn't discourage people from being, so that's what, that's, that's where we have to kind of put, where, where do we set the dollar threshold? That's kind of, that, that's, you know, I, I like the bones on this ordinance. I like everything that's in it. I just, you know, it, it, the economic analysis of it needs to be dove into a little bit, I feel like, before we, before we adopt it.
Yeah, I think so too.
That, that's, I, I, you know, I like that, I like an impact fee, but I don't want it to discourage.
Right.
But I want it to create a fit that's, you know, beneficial to the city and beneficial to the residents and the existing businesses in the city where they're not incurred damages on account of new growth and development, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be wise.
I, I think we can bring this back at a later time when you have more time to look at it, even as, as the council time to look at it.
That'd be fantastic. Any, those of you who have particular interest in, in drainage specifically, I wanted to give you an opportunity. So here it is. Yeah, we'll, we'll refine it a little more on our end. Your feedback would be welcome during that process and we'll bring you back at a later date.
We can get the band back together again.
Well, I think the work is about is, is you can go seven miles north there on the interstate, build a, build on 412 and have no, no regulation. You can go 12 miles off of 51 and I-35 and build whatever you want. So I mean, it's not like we've got this utopia here where we can.
Yeah.
We really have no drainage ordinance to speak of. It's, you know, so when somebody says, you know, well, it's state law, you know, nuisance, that's it. You, you can't create nuisance, you know, on your neighbor by altering drainage conditions. But there, there, we have no teeth to be able to require certain mitigation measures.
Even looking at where we have, where, where we want our developments to be in housing. We don't want to set those developments up to have issues like tower addition, you know, where there's flooding or dealing with drainage issues. We don't, you know, and having something of this in place.
Would, would stop.
Yeah, it would stop that, protects them that.
Yeah, we absolutely need something, but I, I agree that I think a, a analysis needs to be done and maybe part of this needs to be frozen and say, we're not going to do this part right now, but we'll do these two or whatever it is. So I appreciate the feedback. Yeah, we'll absolutely bring this back at a, at a later date. Thank you, Matt. All right. Move on to item number 11. Consider approval of ordinance number 25-15 of the City Council of City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending chapter four, article one of Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the amendment of section 4-104A of Domestic Fowl Land Use Regulation, providing for certain amendments in the Hobby Chicken, Hobby Duck Ordinance, making its application to hens, ducks and quail, permitting a greater number of hens, duck, quail based on acreage, limiting the number permits for lots under one acre, and bringing other provisions providing for peeler savings, codification, severability, fully hand clearing emergency. And so with this, I believe we have a presentation, right?
We do. Yep. Gray is going to give a presentation. She's done some research on this. Tyson, if you would share my screen, I have her presentation up and ready to go.
All right. Well, good evening, council. I've never actually addressed you really. I've never addressed you all at once, so hi. So yes, Nate asked me to present my policy recommendation on, we're going to do chickens, ducks and quail. So this is that presentation. You can go to the next level. Okay. So first of all, I do want to get out of the way for the rest of this presentation, I'm usually going to use the word chickens and that's because most of my research has largely surrounded chickens. I do believe that this is easily transferable to ducks and quail. The only thing that you may be mindful of is that ducks and quail are slightly bigger than chickens. So the space requirements may be different, but I believe that my space requirements are big enough for a good sized bird. So I think we should be good on that. But, so there are several factors that we need to consider when we talk about the amount of chickens or birds that a resident can live in the city. So the first and the most integral is the space that's required for one of these birds to comfortably live. So one of the biggest downsides and one of the biggest criticisms to urban chicken farming is the fact that these chickens are. is the fact that these chickens are, for lack of a better term, cooped up. And they're, you know, you have these people and the stereotypes, you have these people with tiny yards, and they have these chickens, and you know, the neighbor's dog is here, and then the, the chicken's here, and they're like fighting through the fence. So those space requirements are really important, not only from that, but also from an cruelty perspective and to protect the city. So number two is the legislation that is produced by other cities across the US. Now, I am personally not a big proponent of utilizing legislation done by other cities without looking at what the scholars say first and without looking at what the research says first. In my opinion, other cities could have just made up a number. There is no reason for me to believe their number. I could have just made one up, and it would have been faster. So I, I believe in not doing things that way. But once we have looked at the scholars and the research, then we get a more comprehensive view. And this can also help us look at these legislations between different climates and different areas, and maybe what a resident may come to expect when living in a city. And number three is the impact of the backyard chickens. So that's going to be on the environment, on public safety, and on the quality of life for the residents. So on everyone in the city. So how much space does a chicken need? So according to the Royal Society for the Prevention of Cruelty for Animals, 4.3 feet of space is needed per chicken in the coop. And you will notice that some of these numbers look a little odd, and that is because there's a staggeringly little amount of research done in America on this. And my theory for that is that in Europe, they said we have less space, so they care about this more. But these other studies for outdoors are 24 feet with the Ensminger study in 1971, and 30.5 feet by Carr in 1961. And both of these have been cited by the USDA. So the 24 feet, that was for broilers and not hens, done by weight. And the other one was done by age. I have done my best. There are other numbers in, they have a structure and a list. If you want me to get that for you, I absolutely can. And number three, this isn't something I particularly looked at sources for, but as someone who showed livestock for 13 years and as someone who has won several X scholarships, drainage is absolutely essential, people, okay? Drainage is probably, in my opinion, one of the number one factors that is going to contribute to the stench and the sickness, all of these factors. And that's because when the enclosure gets muddy, or when it's too tight, and then they're manuring in the same place, and then they're walking in it, and then that's how you get sickness in the flock. So avoiding that is however we can. That's more crisis territory. I'm not sure if there's a way to legislate that or if there's a way to have different provisions, just accounting for the areas of that we just talked about who do tend to flood more. I would just be mindful of that. So different cities have different approaches for legislation, and I found that really interesting. So most cities do have a maximum. Some of them will just have a simple, flat-out maximum. So Oklahoma City, within city limits, is six birds. That's it. They have other provisions, but it, it really is just six birds. But there are other places like Edmund where they'll have a much larger account, but you have to meet these other criteria in order to get that maximum. And one of those is an acreage system. So some cities do an acreage system, or I've also seen it in feet. I think that is a little bit more complicated. I don't know where they come up with the numbers for feet, but. So Boise does require a minimum of 0.5 acres of dedicated land, and you can have 12 poultry per acre. And they have no maximum. Some other cities like Los Angeles also have no maximum. And I suppose the reason for that is if you have a lot of land, you can have a lot of chickens. But Fulton allows either six chickens per property that's under an acre or really between 0.2 acres and an acre, or 10 birds per acre. Now, something that I think is interesting is there are limitations to my research. I have not looked at every city in the US. I am not able to look at every city in the US. But of the cities I've looked at, Boise was actually kind of interesting in the sense that it did 0.5 acres of dedicated land. Almost all of them that I saw would have just this flat amount, but their dedicated land was really interesting. And in reading the legislation, I found that it regards what it says that needs to actually be the enclosure. So you can't have 0.5 acres, have a house on it, and also have chickens. And other cities have other specific rules. So for instance, St. Paul permits six birds as a baseline, but their, their biggest maximum is 15 birds. But those birds have to prove by 75% of the neighbors on the same street and on the same side of the street. So anyone in the city can, six birds, you know, you get six birds, and you get six birds, and you get six birds. But if you want seven or eight, you have to apply for a separate permit for that. And then your neighbors, I believe they have to get a form to their neighbors, and they have to sign up. And Bozeman, Montana also does something similar where they can be protested. Seven, I think it's still seven to 15 birds, and those can be protested, but six can't. So their neighbors will get a public notice. It's within a certain mile radius or something. And then they're a protest that, but six birds is baseline. So there's a lot of advantages and a couple disadvantages to having hobby birds. So the number one advantage is biorecycling. So chickens are known as biorecyclers, which means that you can feed them things that you won't eat, like fruits and vegetables, that might not be completely rotten, but it's something that is not enough for you to eat. And that can actually make up 10% of their diet. And in fact, they are so good at biorecycling that there are two different cities in Europe, which is Muscon in Belgium and Pau in France, where the city government actually gave out chickens to their residents for free in order to combat a waste management problem that they had. So the number two one, on the advantageous side, is pest management. So cited by Oklahoma State, they are known to eat beetles, grubs, and ticks. I've heard that guineas are better at eating ticks. I don't know if that's true. But they do eat those, and they also do not eat the beneficial insects. So particular for people who are gardening, and this can also move into the sustainability point too. People who garden, they are tending to be really beneficial for gardens because not only can you feed them those fruits and vegetables, but they can turn those fruits and vegetables into chicken litter. And then that chicken litter can be used in the garden, and that can increase the abundance of crops in the soil. And then they'll eat the pests and then not the beneficial insects. And in fact, there are some accounts of chickens where if their enclosure is within, there's a raised bed in their enclosure, they can actually walk on the soil, and their little feedies can tell the soil. And I think that's really, that's assuming your chicken's walking on your crops. I mean, you can't, I don't know if that's going to happen unless you train it to do that. But. So our second to last, our penultimate point is going to be animal cruelty. So corporate farming is horrible for the environment with water pollution, with tragic conditions for the animals. I have seen some pretty nasty things in my time showing livestock. And in supporting backyard chicken farming, we are not only reducing the demand for these corporations, but we're also encouraging our own sort of local economies going on with this, and encouraging homesteading and, you know, some American traditions and some home traditions. And the last point is going to be nutrition. So eggs that are free range have actually been found to contain less cholesterol than their conventional counterparts at a statistically significant level. And considering that heart disease is the number one cause of the death in the US today, that number is a weighted one. So one thing that the opposition is going to tell you is they're going to say that chickens are actually bad for the environment, and they produce methane, and they're actually bad for the environment, and they produce carbon emissions, and they do all these things. And I will be the first to say that they are 100% right. I, I'm not disputing that. They're 100% right. Chickens do contribute carbon emissions. But I also believe that it's important that we understand that we're comparing two viable options here. So the question that I ask is, are we comparing someone having a chicken in their backyard to vegan? Or are we comparing someone having a chicken in their backyard to buying their eggs somewhere else? That chicken still exists. It is simply somewhere else. So if the entire city of Perry went vegan, 100%, I would be the first to be behind that. It would be incredibly sustainable, but I believe that's what we're, that's the issue we're facing today. So those carbon emissions and those points are going to be null and void. There are a couple of downsides, though. So the number one is going to be biosecurity practices. There was a study done in 2013 with Miami, Denver, and Los Angeles, and it showed that urban chicken farmers, specifically those in Spanish-speaking communities, were less likely than expected to know about the connection between live poultry and salmonella. So salmonella is not a crazy disease. The average, it'll give you four to seven days of symptoms. You'll have to skip work. It will not be fun, but you'll survive. But for children under five, the CDC does recommend not handling poultry. I'm pretty sure I handled poultry under five, but the CDC doesn't recommend that, so maybe don't do that. And they also recommend washing your hands after poultry. So assuming that legislation passes, I would recommend also pointing our chicken farmers to Oklahoma State's Extensions Poultry site. They have a backyard poultry page that talks about biosecurity. And I think that'd be a really good resource for them. In the study, they also gave out brochures and put them in feed stores. I think that could also be a good idea. And number two is going to be enforcement requirements. This is very brief. Put simply, if we need someone to inspect the size of a chicken enclosure, we have to pay someone to do it. That, that's it. And the last one is stench. So neighbors can face, you know, stench problems, and that can be not fun for anyone. And the biggest way to mitigate that is with a stench and sort of odor clause and put in there that that coop needs cleaned every day. And once again, ensuring proper aeration of the soil and ensuring that there's proper space for the coop. Because the smaller these pens are, the more that's going to be a problem. If we can get some sunlight on it, and we can get people cleaning their coops, and we get that fertilizer being used for other projects, I guess, then we will mitigate that stench a lot. But I think the biggest one is going to be drainage. So my recommendation is going to be eight birds per acre, that is hen, ducks, and quail. To clarify, you can have four ducks and four quail. You cannot have eight ducks and eight quail. And that would be with a maximum of 30 birds. So someone with four acres could have 30 birds. But the coop and the run space requirements are going to be the most essential here. So I'm recommending four feet of space indoors per chicken and 20 feet of space outdoors per chicken. And where did I get these numbers from? Well, the four feet of space, most of the chicken blogs on the internet recommend three to four feet, and the RSPCA, as previously cited, recommends 4.3. I think we should stick on the larger side of that spectrum. The fact of the matter is livestock are not uniform. They're not all the same size, especially if they're not all the, if they're not even the same breed. And even if two chickens are the same size, they might even have different wingspans and stuff like that. So sticking on the larger side of that is going to be better. And on the 20 feet of space outdoors, the 1971 study recommended 24, and that was 55 years ago. The only other really viable number I've seen is the city of Denver, which recommends 16 feet of space. So 20, I decided was a happy medium, and that was a number I felt comfortable with. And this will also help to allow some flexibility with our citizens. That way, we don't have to legislate that they have a certain size of coop. I mean, someone with two chickens does not need the same size of a coop as someone with, you know, 18 chickens. And for us to mandate or legislate that they have to do that because all coops must be this size, I, I just don't think that's common sense. So there will also be setback requirements. So it can't be in your front yard. Obviously, it must be in your backyard. A certain amount of feet from the neighbors. I believe Nate and I talked about five made other provisions. And then also some general nuisance provisions, which is going to be like cleaning that coop every day, some other things that will give us some enforcement abilities. And also that the city of Perry will reserve the right to investigate the property if there are complaints from the neighbors on animal cruelty and matters like that. So I will be happy to answer any questions that you have, assuming I have the answer. And if I don't, I will write them down, and then I will get back with you. But what questions you have?
I don't have a question, but I did notice there wasn't anything about like predators coming in to get your chickens. Because my friend has chickens, and they're constantly, I mean, they're not for sure if it's a bobcat or coyotes or whatever.
Yeah.
And you let everybody have 30 chickens. That's going to be a problem.
That's true. That is a very good one. So I have seen, seen OSU Extension has several pages on how to avoid predators. I haven't read them, but I can read those and then get back with you and see. I know that some people have put like covers on their chickens enclosures. So if they have like chicken wire, they'll just put chicken wire on top of it too, so that we can avoid it that way. I think that's probably the best option because unless you cover it, I mean, I don't really know how you keep predators out unless, as you just lock the chickens in the coop at night.
It's not just that. It's like they're going to come in everybody else's yard.
Yeah.
They're going to affect. Cats, dogs, everything, you know, pets, things like that.
I have seen that some cities will require that the chickens be locked in coop at night, and that could be why. That could be the reason. Because I've seen several cities that do that.
Well, I think that was, that's, that was one of my concerns is what, you know, a lot of people know what a coop is, but what is the run?
So run is just an enclosure that is not the coop. So it would be like a pasture, but it's not big enough for a pasture. So a run is the agricultural term for a small pasture.
So does, is, is that covered? Is that, does it have to have for the, for the birds? Are you expecting that whole acre to be covered with a net or something of, of that sort to keep them in? You know, chickens can have their wings clipped, their flight wings clipped, and they, they won't fly. And they, they most likely won't get out of an eight-foot, maybe even a six-foot chain link fence. But, you know, that was the one thing that I seen in the ordinance. The exact one. You know, the, the, a run is a secure outdoor area attached to the coop, allowing for natural behavior while, while protecting health and safety. In, in that sense, the coop is not actually going to be connected to the closure if it's just a pasture.
So it would be like, this is actually a really good example. So if this is the coop, there would be fences that connect here, and then that would run. So they can come in and out of the coop and go into the run and out, but they can't go anywhere else. So it's like, it's sort of, it, it is like a connecting enclosure. It's if you had just a fence. Typically, they're not covered, although we did just talk about maybe covering them. That might be something to consider with predators. But typically, they're not covered, but they will just have only one door in that pasture. I'm just going to call it that because I raised words. They just have one door, and that door is to the coop. And that way, they have their water source, and you might have another water source in the run if people so choose. They can only get in and out of the coop and the runs. So they can't go anywhere else. So they are, so they are.
So, so technically, the coop could be in the middle of the run, not being connected to it.
Correct. Yes.
Because, you know, the chicken's going to go in and hide anyway. All you got to do is lock the doors.
Yes. That is usually not done just because people want to go to coop and get their eggs in the easiest way possible, but it's definitely possible if someone would do it that way. That would definitely count. It would also just be more missing to pay for, but I don't see any problems with that.
Well, somebody may already have the fence, and the fence is already there. I mean, it's a chain link fence that's four or six foot high. Chickens are running around in there during the day. They're not doing anything, but at night, you know, they wait till sundown and go out. The chickens up in the coop because they're already in there.
Yeah.
And there's not an extra fence inside the yard.
Yes.
To, to keep the chickens in, that's allowed. And that's, that was part of the, the ordinance that I think I would, I would like to have a bit clearer definitions of, of that run or what is allowed.
I will say that it would be almost 100% certain that they're going to need a second fence because of those setback requirements we're going to set for the neighbors. That way, they can't use like their neighbor's fence, and their chickens can just be running in their whole yard. They would have to have a separate enclosure for that.
So you may have seen Gray dove into chickens more than she ever expected.
Oh, you got to get a dog.
Yeah, the research. And she didn't come up with the, the ordinance, so if there's any issues with that, like Joey, you were mentioning, that's on me. She came up with the recommendation, and we made that into an ordinance, so. Do you guys have any other questions for Gray before you discuss?
Thank you. Absolutely. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess before we discuss, I mean, there, there's a number of people here that came for this ordinance. Is there anything that anybody would like to, to put in or say?
What I read is, is there going to be where you have to basically go through, was it like seven hour or something before you can get your permit? So people understand, you know, how to keep their coop clean.
I couldn't find that in there. Yeah, I could mention that, but I didn't see that. Was it in the?
Extension office, I think.
How? Was that in the striked out part or?
Oh, no, it's in there.
It's in there.
Two-hour course.
Yes.
Through the extension office, right?
Because that would also help if it was in there on how people, you know, what they could do as far as, you know, like we, we dump a lot of sand, and that helps with any of that. And then our ducks have pressure rocks and stuff like that. That helps. I just do know that's within the course, flipping white feathers so that they can't fly over. Because you can't have chickens fly over them.
That's a good point, because there's a lot of times that the, what is the, see, the, the, the disease, disease control people come out and say that there is an infestation of the bird flu, and your chickens are liable to get it, and it will, you know, it could cross, cross species. And you have to be careful with that. So it would be a good point to make sure people understand that because I don't think a lot of people understand. They don't know chickens other than just lay eggs.
Yeah.
Very true.
Well, my concern is. Well, my concern is, is if we do allow twenty-five, twenty-four to thirty birds per house, code enforcement's going to be policing that more. I mean, I feel like it's going to be a bigger issue.
The code for animal control.
I don't know, someone's going to have to police it.
Well, maximum's thirty, but it's up, it's limited to the size, the size of the lot.
So if you have three acres, you can have twenty-four birds.
It's got three acres in town.
Well, everybody by me does.
Yeah, there's certainly an administrative aspect that would put some sort of burden on, on the, on the.
I mean, the, so the animal control person, you know, if we're doing annual permits, then they'll have a list of, okay, we go and check this, this one, this one, this one. Now that I don't know how big.
I just don't think it's necessary.
This whole thing just concerns me. I mean, I'm, I'm all for hobby chickens and hobby, when we're talking thirty birds, it's no longer a hobby.
Exactly.
And we don't have the storm of people coming in here, I need thirty chickens in my yard. We're going to change the law. I don't, I don't even want to consider this.
We have to have the acreage rip.
And that's the thing, it's not just one, one property we're talking about, we're talking the entire.
We're talking about changing the town.
Yeah. I feel like if you want twenty-four to thirty birds, then you should live at the limits. It's just my opinion.
The thing I do like about this though is that it also limits those that have smaller properties. Cause he, like I said in the last meeting, it didn't make sense to me to have someone that has four acres to have their birds and someone that has a tiny home on a tiny lot to have the same amount in a much smaller space.
Then there should be provisions for smaller spaces.
Right, for smaller spaces, right. I know that Shay and Danette had some questions. They couldn't be here. I, I do think that this ordinance needs a little bit more work. I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to tabling this till later day to take a closer look at it.
Or, or does the ordinance need work? Or do we just need to amend the, the current ordinance to admit space for smaller lots? Cause to me, I don't see a whole lot wrong with the current ordinance.
Right.
I think the setbacks could be changed too. We take like, like my house, for example, I have a neighbor that has, their coop is about ten away from my bedroom window.
Right.
Right.
You know, and like, you know, deciding where, um, where a coop can be in a person's yard. So it's, so it is away from the neighbor. I think would be nice.
No, that's a good point.
So they put some setbacks in this ordinance. They are there. I have, uh, I'm not married to this ordinance at all, I don't have chickens personally. Um, we, we as staff pursued this at council's insistence last time in this meeting, if you guys remember.
Yes.
And, uh, so we'll do whatever you want, you know, but if, if you want us to take a look at, if, if you want me to amend the ordinance here, like make some changes, I, I'd so much appreciate feedback.
Well, I'm with, I'm in grants with Randy, the current ordinance for sure needs, the smaller lot size needs to be like, what am I trying to say? Currently there's five chickens per household. I feel like if it's a smaller yard, you shouldn't have chickens. If it's, I mean, I don't know what number that is currently, because if you're going to compare somebody's yard that's two and a half acres versus somebody that just has front and backyard, if it's small. I don't know how many chickens you should be allowed to have, but it shouldn't be five if this person that has two acres can only have five.
So it sounds like you're, you think that five should be max, but you should go smaller.
I think it should work on our current, current ordinance, is what Randy had earlier. Which is five.
We do have a minimum limit to have chickens. Two thousand square feet in the current ordinance.
And there's supposed to have permits, right, if they have chickens currently?
I don't think so.
There's a permit.
There is a permit. So it's on there.
It's actually called registration.
Oh, registration. It's definitely like the same thing for like, you know, cats, sometimes we've got, I mean, Perry's got an absurd amount of cats running around everywhere. And that attracts predators as well.
So three council members say really they don't want to consider this, they would rather maybe look at five as the max and just admitting our current ordinance, which it already has a minimum. So I'm kind of hearing three council members say, we're, we're not interested in pursuing this. Like I said, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I think, I think the cats example is a great example. I mean, I don't think we want to live next to somebody with thirty cats. And, and then if, if we want to put an ordinance in for commercial foul, got some regulations around commercial foul for those kind of numbers, then I'm okay with it. But if you say hobby chickens, talk about the kind of numbers we're talking about, that's an oxymoron, they don't, they don't fit.
Cats is a bad example, because we will have, with it, some cats that just run feral all over town.
It's been people.
There are a couple of houses that have at least thirty cats within, um,
Scott and Austin, do you guys have any feedback?
I agree with everybody, said thirty's kind of resting, well, but a hobby would be in. I did like one thing in her presentation, that permit and seventy-five percent of your neighbors.
Have to vote first, sign off on it?
I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, allowing for more than five chickens. Thirty, thirty to me seems like a lot, but I mean, you know, I mean, going above five, if you've got the, the space for, for more, I'd be okay with. More of a one.
I don't even know, I don't even know.
I don't know what that number would be for me. I mean, yeah, I think our current ordinance could take a look, you know, could use some more.
What scares you about thirty that's next door?
Well, it's just, I mean, I, I think it could get out of control. I think everybody will have them. And then I'm, I don't know, I just feel like if you have twelve to thirty chickens, that's something that you outside.
If everybody has five chickens, so if somebody has five, you're okay with that?
I mean, that's what, that's what it's been.
That's only for people that have four plus acres.
How many people in your neighborhood have five chickens?
I would have to knock on the door, I don't know. I, I mean, I don't.
So, so they may, somebody may have thirty and you don't know it.
I would know it. I know I would know.
How many lots in Perry have more than, you know, acres?
I think the other thing that worries is we're taking something that is supposed to be a fun hobby to get some of the positive benefits that, that she talked about in her presentation. And now we're trying to regulate it like it's commerce. And we're doing that because we're trying to allow a commerce size flock. I, I don't want to run something that's fun for several people in our community, because we're trying to complicate it, because we're going to, we want it to be run as a business and that's, that's not what we're after.
We could, we could keep ordinance the way that it is and do a variance in this particular situation. Where we allow more chickens, a variance stays with the homeowner. So once they sell or move away from the home, variance goes with it and it refers back to the, whatever.
I think Bryce, Bryce said, when we talked about it, because we talked about that initially and I think Bryce said, we don't do variances on zoning regulations, is that correct Bryce?
Well, unless you provide the criteria in the ordinance under which you did it, you can call it a special exception. If you have, you know, greater than some acreage.
Cause they could take that.
And then provide that it only runs to the folks. So, I mean, if you've got criteria, I mean, you could, you could do that. Of course, we're not going to have hearings before the board of adjustment on variances, which is really where that's going to. Uh, so yeah, I mean, you could provide that. The one thing, five hobby chickens, uh, and then we added hobby ducks. It was really for people that wanted eggs. And you can't count on every chicken like one egg.
Right.
Every day, and so it was just people that wanted, you know, free eggs, free eggs, which are an outstanding source of protein. More and more we're learning, but you know, you need one every day is what, um.
Backdoor trap.
Right. But, but so, but so that's why we did it.
Right.
And, and I think, I think it's worked. I mean, I can tell you that since we passed this, I don't think I had one complaint about, uh, you know, about the chickens that's, that's come. I, I don't, have you heard of one since you've been here Nate?
I have.
I mean, I, I don't think so. I think it's working. So we may just be kind of working overtime on something that, uh, that's working now. But if you want to provide an exception in the existing ordinance, we can certainly do that based on acreage. And it would just be, it would be about thirty birds.
And so when somebody applies for that or goes for that, would that go to council or does that go to the?
Oh, no, it would, it would, it would have to be permitted by, if you wanted to introduce the, the, this issue, you've got to get your neighbors to sign off of it, you know, theirs. Uh, if you do that, uh, that certainly, would seem reasonable. You know, I hate land use based on arbitrary decisions from the neighbors. I hate those regulations, but I suppose in, in this case, it could work.
Like if you live in town, you have to care about what your neighbors think, they have a say if you want. Bunch of stuff, you live outside of town, but you can make that choice.
So we would determine the threshold of this percentage or?
X amount.
Yeah.
Well, I think, well, I think she said it was, it was how many.
Not my recommendation?
Yeah.
Uh, eight per acre.
Yeah.
But I mean, the, to get the neighbors, it was what, seventy-five percent?
Uh, there were two towns, one of them was seventy-five percent only on the same side of the street. And then the other one was neighbors have the right to protest over seven, but they don't have the right to protest under seven birds.
Birds, right, right. So it'd be the people that live on the same street?
Yes.
Yeah, Bryce, it seems like if, if we do, if we can do an exception in this case where they'd have to do the board of adjustment process and that would involve getting neighbors in and agree to, you know.
Well, the, the way I would do it is I would do a special exception within the existing ordinance and provide that you got to get your two or neighbors. If you're on a quarter lot, because really those are the folks that are going to. Uh, and, and you've got to get, you could say a hundred percent. I mean, the guy across the street, you know, that's not, wouldn't think that would be an adverse impact. It's really your neighbors on either side. It may be behind you.
Behind you.
You know.
Adjoring property.
Adjoring property.
Yeah, and property that's adjoining. And if you wanted to say, you know, a majority or three quarters. And then you would set, you know, uh, of the number per acre. And it, it probably wouldn't involve that many properties, but that would be fairly so. If you'd like to just see what that looks like, we could bring it back.
Yeah. We pose that.
Could it be more than specific than just per acre? I like what you said about dedicated land, just because you have three acres, are all three of your acres usable? Are those covered in trees and are the chickens even going to be back there to account?
Or if you have three acres, you have this, this area dedicated for, for that? I don't know how that would look like. Is that any of all that stuff?
And so if you stayed under that hobby level, you'd be exempt of those extra requirements we're getting ready to add?
Yeah, in this ordinance, I'd put an exception, figuring you would want an exception. Anyone that has an existing permit will be able to keep five. Cause I'm sure there's a number of folks in town that, that.
Correctly.
Yeah, I mean, and they're not causing issues with their neighbors, or I would be hearing about it. Is the chief, chief, do we have any chicken complaints?
Not really. We got more stray dogs, cats up there. That one, but chickens no.
I'm only supposed to speak, just react to this. Last time or today?
Sound good?
Is everybody okay with that? So with that, we won't take any action. So with that, we'll skip over item twelve, that's the emergency clause for that. And we will then go on to item thirteen. Consider action on application for rezoning and lot combination for fifteen oh four North Eighth Street, Perry, Oklahoma, seven three zero seven seven, by Albert Jeff Taylor and Jennifer Dawn Driscoll Taylor. So again, this was last time, um, they had, uh, they had gone to the planning commission about rezoning their lot. The planning commission suggested, you know, to shut that down, but they didn't really address, um, their other ask. The application was for combining the two lots that they do have. And so this would just be coming to us just to go ahead and combine those lots for them.
Bryce, I, uh, I didn't see anything adverse by doing this. I don't see any issues. Is there anything we should consider or council should consider when they look at a question like this?
No. No, I think, I think this lot combination's fine. However, uh, you do need to take formal action on the, on the rezoning. The recommendation is denial. So you should take action on the rezoning and then take action on the lot combination.
We did one motion or just separate or?
Uh, probably separate, there, there are two applications and people may vote differently.
Right.
Yeah.
Was there any, any questions on, on this one? No, let's start with, um, so the recommendation was to deny the rezoning, um, for making it ag.
I, I would so move that we deny the rezoning tag.
I'll second that. Okay. Time for roll call when you're ready, Chris?
Copy?
Yes.
Bloodsow?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Wortham?
Yes.
Almost did it.
And so for the other motion for approving the lot combination?
No, I'm going to motion approve the lot combination.
And this is just pretty the already own.
Yeah, yeah, this is probably the already own, yeah. So they all second.
Copy?
Yes.
Bloodsow?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wortham?
Yes.
All right. Item fourteen. Items pertaining to project Duke fourteen A, consider approval ordinance number twenty-five dash sixteen, renaming the north south street in the Perry industrial park, industrial parkway to Duke Drive or Distribution Drive or Equestrian Avenue or Industrial Ridge Road or Pioneer Drive or Arch, Arch and Newish Avenue or fulfillment way or A and A way. You guys can come up with other names if you want to. In the court limits of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, certification and declaring emergency. So this is just renaming those streets that will be going.
Yeah, so you have Gloria Brown, um, and then we need to, we need to rename that other one. It's, Bryce says it has a name to put. What was the capture, it wasn't actually?
Well, one was three S. One of them was three S and the other one was, and, and three S actually was the company that built the road and that was part of the request, but then they sold their track to Richard and so, uh, we don't honor that anymore. Uh, actually, uh, project Duke, you know, the folks that are plating are looking for a name to put on their plat. So that's part of this, they're going to plat that road plus their track.
But they're actually company Duke, their company.
Yeah, that's what's hard about this, right?
They're just looking for a name, they don't want their own name on it.
Why not, I'm trying to get with the name of the company.
You are so sneaky.
That's what's tough about this though, right? Is if you knew the name of the, you might be able to, but we have to do this earlier than later because we're trying to get all the drugs around the plating.
Well, throw in addition, Logistics Way.
Oh, that's a new one. Logistics Way.
That's just about as sexy as the first.
Cause Equestrian Avenue would go along with the arena. All the other ones are just.
Well, Duke Drive goes good, John Wayne.
Well, what, what was? Well, what, what was?
I like the shorter ones. You don't have to write up.
What's A and A way?
A and A?
Oh, arena. You're arena.
Oh, okay.
I like Duke Drive.
I like that it's best on the list.
That is kind of fun. I mean, it's, it's a secret name that they.
I mean, think about it. We also have, isn't Sixth Core, John Wayne?
Yeah, Sixth Core is John Wayne.
So I mean, that's kind of cool.
Fun, good fun memories.
So, so we need to decide this now or are we just giving you the ability to go?
Oh, I'd love it if you guys decided. I don't really, I don't really want the ability.
I like Duke Drive.
I like Duke Drive. They want to, they got to, you know, start coming up with their ads.
Duke Project.
Right.
Project Duke.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. It's Duke Drive.
There you go. There we go.
It was Christie's favorite.
That's not stopping us from doing.
That was mine.
Me though, would be Gloria Brown. That's.
No, that's not Gloria.
That's the beginning.
That's just the other, yeah, street.
Second.
Uh, it was.
Paulson?
Yeah.
You're sorry. Okay, copy?
Yes.
Blood?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wortham?
Yes.
All right. That's the one you wanted, huh?
Yes.
All right, fourteen B. Consider approval of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash seventeen. Renaming the east west street in the Perry industrial, Gloria G. Brown Avenue with the corporate limits of the city and the corporate limits of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, codification and declaring emergency.
Only question I have is, do we want to keep the drive to keep it consistent? Since we just named the other one Drive?
What are the differences?
I don't know.
I mean, it's.
No, no, I'm not saying I'm, I agree with you. I just, is there a true difference between Drive?
Avenue and Drive or, yeah.
Well, it, it's streets run one way, avenues run another.
That's why I just wondered, is it something like that?
But that was the name.
We didn't get.
In the proclamation.
Oh.
That was the name in the proclamation.
You just make the motion and say Drive instead of, or Avenue or whatever.
So I guess the proclamation was Avenue.
Was it?
Yeah.
So we made public proclamation or?
Yeah.
But, but, but it needs to formally be done by ordinance.
Motion to approve is.
Set it fast.
Okay, copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wortham?
I should have thought it was profined.
It's proclaimed.
All right, fourteen C. Consider approval of the emergency clause for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash sixteen and ordinance number twenty-two-five.
So, second.
And copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wortham?
Yes. Fourteen D. Consider finding that the conditions on the project Duke site plan have been agreed to and the site plan is approved without conditions.
So you, uh, council gave me the ability to negotiate their site plan improvements. Um, they've agreed to, they've agreed verbally to pitch it to the client. And I think that they'll, they'll accept it without any issues to pave, uh, John, John Brown. I want to say John Brown, that's not.
John Wayne.
John. Um, John Wayne Boulevard up to the turnoff. And then to also asphalt their, their strip. So that would be.
Duke Drive.
That, that's, they're agreeing to that.
Correct.
As part of the conditions of the site plan.
Correct. And so that's a, I mean, it's, it's all that we hope for. And then in addition to that, they're doing smaller things, but things that a lot of companies wouldn't necessarily do, which is bringing electric to their site, um, bring water and sewer to their site. Normally, we would take the site and they would take it beyond. So honestly, the negotiation went very well. I felt like, uh, they've treated us very fairly throughout this whole process and this was no exception.
Motion to approve with, do we need a, anything back to the site plan or?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do a memo back to the site plan showing that's, that it's approved. Your, your act would be to approve the site plan without condition based on the agreed on, uh, off-site approvals.
So moved.
Second. He just wanted you to make it formal.
All right, copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wortham?
Yes.
All right, item fifteen. Discuss strategic plan and the mixed uses desired in the south commercial industrial park across the Sooners Corner.
Are you okay, Mayor, if we table this one?
Yeah. I had hoped to do a little bit more preparation for, for this discussion. And I, I'm not, I didn't get that down. It probably would have been fine, but I feel like executive session is going to take quite some time.
Is there anything you want to be preparing for?
Yeah, I think the only thing is just be thinking about, uh, be thinking about that acreage by the city and how you see it being used. What your thoughts would be on the vision there.
All right, item sixteen. Consider convening into executive session for the purposes of, one, discussing the internal order of police lodge number one thirty-seven pursuant to title twenty-five section three oh seven eight point two of the Oklahoma statute as amended. Two, conferring on the matters pertaining to the economic development of the city of Perry involving the Seth Watt Auto Plex, including the creation of a proposal to entice a business located within the city. If public disclosure of the matter is discussed with fear with the development of proposal or if public disclosure would violate the confidentiality of the business pursuant to title twenty-five section three oh seven C point one-one of the Oklahoma statutes as amended.
Certainly.
Okay. Yeah, copy?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldiron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wortham?
Yes.
All right, item seventeen, reconvening regular session. You have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
And coffee.
Yes.
Plonson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calder.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
For them.
Yes. Item eighteen, take any action deemed necessary after the executive session.
Oh, it would be appropriate to make a motion to approve the, uh, the collective bargaining agreement with lodge number one thirty-seven.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Robb.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wortham.
Yes. And adjourned.
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 Okay.
All right, let's call our meeting in order for the Perry Municipal Authority. Now for a call.
Coffee.
Yeah, here.
Bludson.
Yeah.
Marshall.
Yeah.
Davis.
Here.
Coldarn.
Here.
Robb.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher. Wortham.
Here. All right, we've got a core item one consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Coffee.
Yes.
Bludson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Robb.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wortham.
Yes. And adjourned.
So moved.
Good to go. There.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right, let's call our meeting in order for the Perry Facilities Authority. Now for a call.
Coffee.
Here.
Bludson.
Here.
Marshall. Davis.
Crescent.
Coldarn.
Here.
Robb.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher. Wortham.
Here. Item one consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
And coffee.
Yes.
Bludson.
Yes.
Davis, yes. Coldarn.
Yes.
Robb.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wortham.
Yes. And adjourned.